I know that if you have any questions in regards to the proposed ordinances, Steve Hewlett is here from the Health District. If there's any questions on those ordinances.
Paula Jones, 5 Berry H Drive. I just have one, I guess, question, point of clarification or confirmation with respect to the swimming pool ordinance and the inspection fee, which my recollection is it's like $250. I'm a member of a small kind of cooperative pool in our neighborhood, Rump Spring Pool, and we have the pool, Department of Public Health come out and inspect every year. I guess my question, concern is what typically happens is there's usually a minor detail or something that the health inspector comes back to check on, and my concern is if that were to happen several times, what the fees could ultimately add up to. So could I have just clarification on what would happen in a case like that? Thank you.
Mr. Hewlett?
Nothing really changes between what we've done in the past with your pool and what we do in the future, so the reinspection aspect of that ordinance is really for non-compliance. It's not that if we come in, we're helping you to make a correction and you're making that correction, we'd continue to work with your pool as all the pools in town, as we always have in the past. That reinspection period would really be for that consistent non-compliance. I mean, you're not moving forward, so therefore to get your attention.
Any other questions or comments on the proposed ordinances? Going once, going twice, we now call the public hearing to an end.
I don't think that's the right spot. Madam Mayor, I don't think we need to wait until 7:40. We need to have the clerk read these into the record.
Correct. What time is it? So, I'm sorry, I thought they were together. The first one was about the swimming pools. The second ordinance is about the proposed modifications to the ordinance for food and food handlers. Are there any questions in regards to that ordinance? Help them, I know. Just wanted to give the people a heads up if there's any here.
Yeah, I got 7:40, 30 minutes.
What's his name? Quinn.
Frank Quinn. You might want to say to everybody that we hope you'll stay and listen to Black History through Frank Quinn, Director of Music for Schuylkill.
Oh, he did, yeah, I did see him. Yeah, he was responding. Okay, I have 7:40. Are there any more, if any questions, any concerns, any comments? I officially call the public hearing to a close. At this time, we'll have announcements and presentations. There's no one on the list? No, I'm sorry, public comments, okay. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone if you would please just stay with us. We do have a Black History presentation from the high school. Mr. Quinn?
Good evening. Mr. Quinn, from Bloomfield High School. I'm the music coordinator district for Bloomfield High, Bloomfield Public Schools. I'd like to introduce the Voice of Inspiration, or a select group for Voice of Inspiration led by Ms. Aubrey Bowman, the choir director at Bloomfield High School. And they're going to a selection, "With Every Voice" and sing, arranged by Ms. Aubrey Bowman. Please enjoy. With every voice dancing to the hymn of dream, bring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the roaring sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the darkness has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun, our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Stone in the river we shout, glitter the chassis bright. Fell in the days when no unborn had died. Yet with the sadly peace and our weary feet, come to the face for which our fire is dying. We have come over the wind and the tears have been watered. We have come treading our path through the blood of the slaughter. Out from the gloomy past, till now we stand at last. Where the white queen of all our starry skies. Thou who has taught us far away, thou who has died blind. Let us into the light, keep us forever running the night we pray. Let our feet straighten the paths that are dark where we may be. Let our hearts jump with the wine of the world we forget. Shall we be deep again, may we forever stand. Choose who our God, choose who our name, to let, let him land.
Thank you. That was amazing. That's just a little taste of what they can do. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Thompson, our superintendent, and Mr. Don Harris, our school board chair. Thank you so very much, as well as thank the students for coming. At this time, we will have citizen statements and petitions.
Good evening. My name is Patrine Davis and my address is 84 Inglewood Avenue, Bloomfield. That was beautiful, sorry. I'm going to put that down.
Sorry.
Okay, so I have a child at Carmody Ray's Middle School, and I'm here because there are concerns with special ed at the middle school. Special education for children have increased dramatically, well, within the past how many years, and I believe this may have to do with since 2013, our budget was cut over a three-year period of $860, okay? And unfortunately, it was approved by the town council each year without considering the impact it would have on our kids. There's so much I want to say, I don't know if I'm going to have enough time, but so what happened, so because of the cuts, the $860,000 or somewhere there, we used to have four teams, now we only have one. It means that each grade only have one teacher for each core subject, such as one teacher for math, one for English, other than, okay, there's another teacher there for kids who are on grade level, and there aren't many, to be honest. So majority of our kids are left with this one teacher who does the regular class, also academic class. So this also impacts math, English Language Arts, social studies, and science, and this is the same for both seventh and eighth grade. So today, there are 226 students at CAMHS, Carmody Ray's Middle School, and the budget only projected 202 students, so now we're left with an additional 24 students, and nowhere has shown provision has been made for these students. Class sizes increased dramatically, like my son's class, he said there are nearly 30 students there, some students don't even have a desk, they sit on a chair, so, and no one said, I don't hear anything about doing anything to alleviate these issues. Also, a child at Carmody Ray's Middle School can go through nine years of school without ever being exposed to a foreign language, because if they're not at grade level, they're put in, you know, additional class to make up their core subjects, and then, okay, as a parent, you want your child to, you know, excel in the major subjects, so you're not going to really fight about that. That's not legal. You could get your child into the foreign language class if you want, but like I said, if they're already below grade level, you're not going to fight it because you want the best for them, you want to try to get them up to speed, but again, the board has said they're not doing anything to help that issue. Last year, what they did, we complained, they tried to quiet us, so what they did, they hired two retired teachers, and that was from January to May. These teachers are English Language Arts teachers, so they couldn't help in math, science, so that was kind of ridiculous. They were there probably serving no purpose because we always have more English Language teachers than the other subjects, so, and also, they did not include any additional teachers in the budget, or tutors in the budget, this current budget, so we're still without sufficient teachers for our kids. And so this brings me to special ed, which is really dear to me. Like I said, this could have to do with the poor quality education system we have. Survey says, poor quality preschool leads to special, you know, more kids in special education, so that could be one of the reasons. So of the 226 students, we have 64 of the students at CAMHS that are special ed student, and each of these students, they have an IEP, Individual Education Plan. So in that plan, it will state the number of hours, the childcare service, to meet the suggested goals and objectives, okay? So currently, at the school, they have two dedicated special ed teachers, one for seventh grade, one for eighth grade. The board will tell you we have four teachers, but there's another two teachers. One, actually, actually, the other two teachers, they provide service for fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and these are kids with more severe disabilities and behavioral issues. So our one teacher in eighth grade and seventh grade, they combined, they actually have to provide service hours of more than 300. I'm just being generous now, it's actually a lot more. When you think of it, they're only 30, less than 35 hours in a school week. How can two teachers provide so many service hours to do, to these kids? They need more services than anyone else, and the board, they know that, they don't do anything to help. These teachers are, they're overwhelmed. What they do, they, they'll group, take a group of kids into the classroom, kids could be at, you know, eighth grade level, third grade level, fifth grade level, and they try to do their best, so they'll work with this student, have someone else maybe go on the computer, try to read a book, whatever, and it means that when they do that, so if...
It's time.
She's going to give me her five minutes, Emily Stewart, she's the next person. Is that okay? So, so pretty much though, what will happen, so they group these kids, and it means that everybody gets, you know, an hour, even though service was not provided, remember, these kids, they have individual education plan. They need special services and support to actually get to their goals, and the board, they know, they know that they're not doing anything. They said the teachers can manage, and yes, the teachers, they do a great job, they're great teachers, they try to do the best they can, they love our kids. For the most part, most of the teachers at CAMHS, they're good teachers. Also, they don't have enough instructional assistant to these special ed teachers. They have two male teachers, one for seven, I mean instructional assistant, one for seventh grade, one for eighth grade. If a student, say for example, female student, has a personal issue, for example, bathroom mission needs assistance, the teacher has to leave the class and go assist that student and leave the group of student who are already not getting the service that they need with the instructional assistant. So you see, and they know about this, they still don't do anything. So I'm here because, you know, I don't think that's good enough, to me, that's unethical. If you know something is wrong, why do you continue to do it? You know, and we can never be successful if we continue like this. I equate success with ethics. To me, success doesn't mean you are rich or have, you know, fame or a lot of degrees. To me, success means doing what's right, and ethics is the same thing. So unfortunately, if that's the way we're going to run the school, like a business, try to save money, we'll never be successful, so I'm speaking here as a parent to the citizen because without investing in our, investing in our kids, our community will never improve, and survey shows that. So I'm hopeful and proud of all of our students. I don't see them as a burden. When I go, whenever I go to the board of ed, all I hear, oh, it's very expensive for these, you know, special ed student. Yes, it's expensive, but they still need our support in order to develop their gifts and talents, so research show that children who attend high-quality preschool and school programs are less likely to need special education, to be arrested, or to require social services. They tend to be healthier, earn higher incomes, and pay more taxes, so please, please, Bloomfield resident, please speak to, you know, call the school. You don't have to believe anything I say, just go to the school. Go to the school, you can, if you go there and they don't want to give you the information, you can do freedom of information. The board, yes, they'll give you some information, they might not give you all the information, but if you persist, you'll get the information. Sit in the classroom, you'll see what I'm talking about, okay? So I'm not going to take up any more of your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alzina Daniel? Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Alzina Daniel, 12 Park Avenue. As a former teacher in Hartford, I really do feel your pain. I'm here because I see you have on old business, blighted property list, and I have a concern as a citizen that I just see a number of my neighbors with enough trash in their yards to audition for Sanford and Son. Now, I don't know, I don't know what the purpose is in stockpiling all of the stuff in their backyard, but I know that if it continues, that that type of hoarding, and that's all I can see that it is, is hoarding, breeds for vermin, and vermin don't know property lines, and I am petrified of rodents, and I do not want them on my property any more than the occasional raccoon which sends me into a tizzy. So I think that it's time to impose a fine upon our fine neighbors, because they're certainly not being very neighborly in their spirit in maintaining their property, and they have a responsibility to the community that they resided, and I think that some notice could be given, just as, I don't know who those lovely people were that came and inspected my property to let me know that I could indeed pay some more in taxes, but whoever those great folks are, I'm sure you could send them around, and they could simply give people a nice little orange notice, you know, couldn't help but notice, you have a lot of trash out here, you know, you have until this date to clean it up, because otherwise it is just continuing to bloom. So that is one complaint I have. I also, as I said, reside at 12 Park Avenue. Right behind me, I did not know when I purchased my property, that I was going to be adjacent to a truck stop. Every night, there are at least three 18-wheelers, and I've tried to speak to Don about it. He is the owner of Savmore Plaza, it's not Savmore anymore, it's now Fresh Farms, but he still owns it because he's there. And I said, there is no way you're going to tell me all these trucks can just pull up in here and park after the plaza is closed and have their trucks running all night long. Now, my concern is that if this says on the side of your truck, danger flammable, and you're in there asleep and it's running all night long, and this up against my property, the property that's just been developed next to me, as well as my neighbors, because we're talking 18-wheelers, and you just have them parked there, then are you paying someone shouldn't net, isn't their place in Bloomfield where the trucks can legally park and the town get that money? I mean, I just don't think that it is proper for them to be in a residential area, even though it is a plaza, and you're just parking your 18-wheeler there. So those were my two concerns, and to my fellow citizen, with special ed, you really got to go to the state, because, I'm not saying it just because he's here, but Dr. Thompson turned around one of the worst schools in Hartford and brought it to blue ribbon status, and as soon as he left, it went pretty much right back down the tubes where he brought it out from. And he works very hard with the machinery that you have to go through with the state. I can tell you from being a teacher, I had 28 children in my classroom, 18 were spared. Of that 18, eight had the highest classification that they could be given under special ed. They were highly socially emotionally disturbed, begat, and as a classroom teacher who does not have a degree in special ed, it was my duty and my role as a teacher to service their needs, and you have to make sure as a teacher, your child's teacher is being that, because I would call the state and say, you know, somebody needs to be in here and check in on this child's IEP, because I'm doing my part, there are you to do your part. And if it's not brought to the state's attention, they don't know, they forget all about it. You know, they just make up the proposals and then that's it. So you stay vigilant and get what you need for your child, and thank you very much for my concern. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Adams, King Lyman Lane, transplant from Hartford to Bloomfield, and I'm loving it. I went to my first town hall meeting last two weeks, and I must tell you, it's very encouraging. Lived in Hartford for 28 years, and I just wanted some peace, and I have my little peace right off of Blue Hills. Soon as you come out, there's everything, you go back in, it's just me and the birds. But like I said, it was very encouraging to hear all the comments and just listening to the feedback at last town hall meeting, and I'm hoping that this is, it's going to be a regular. My only, my concern here, now, I feel since I'm standing here, Lyman Lane, oh my goodness, the potholes, I'm surprised that the garbage trucks make it down, and it's getting bigger and bigger. When I moved to the lane, they said that this, the towns, the neighbors, the longest, the longest-standing neighbors were saying that the town says that it's private road, and I'm confused because we do get the trash pickup and our garbage man, oh my goodness, they're really, really doing their job, but we're just concerned that you can just watch them doing this as they going in and going out, the potholes are getting bigger and bigger. We don't even want a new road, just fill the potholes. We like the rusticness of it and the noise coming in from the gravel, that's fine, just just help us fill the potholes and maintain it. But again, thank you, thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. That's it? All right, so we're going to move into reports from our subcommittees. Administration and Education.
Thank you. Administration and Education, Matt, on February 5th at 6:30, we voted to refer item 18-26 to consider and take action regarding ordinance on regulated modeling, hairdressing, cosmetology, nails, tanning, massage, tattoo, and body piercing, and so on, back to the council for public hearing. So that would be it, our next councilman. We also received a status update on the Farmington River Park House from Dave Malesko, Director of Leisure Service, and John Lawler, Director of Public Works. I have to say, before the meeting, I went out with councilmen to visit the property, and I have to say, I'm a little disappointed that I was at the meeting in October when the Admin Education Committee referred, actually referred to Dave Malesko to get a tarp on that roof because it was deteriorating and the building was in really dire shape, and it's been three months now and nothing has been done. So I think we have a commitment to our residents to make sure that we're taking care of our public resources and buildings, to make sure we maintain it, and that wasn't done, so Dave is right now going through a process holistically to get some, some sort of information as far as what we're going to do with that park and with the actual building, but in the meantime, we're going to put some tarp on the building to make sure that we can salvage as much as possible. The next item on the list was, new item, it was in regards to the status update regarding the 27, 2018, talented Bloomfield affirmative action. A little brief report on some status update. 21 employees were hired during the first half of the AAP year, 15 or 71% of the new hires were minorities. You had two Hispanic females, seven black females and six, and six black females. There were three promotion during the first half of the AAP year. One was a promotion, or 33% was a minority, one Hispanic male. One was a promotion, or 33% was a minority, one Hispanic male. I'll give a slight breakdown for the different department, for administration and officials. There were no hire during the period of July 1st of 2017 through December 31st of 2017 in this new job group. Professional assistant, professional assistant building official, one hire, it was a white male. There were 11 applicants for this position. Nine met a minimum qualification, no minorities applied. One white female was offered the position, but declined to offer. Foster care and family support workers, two new hires, two black females. Deputy Town Engineer, one was hired, it's a white female. There were six applicants for this position, five met the minimum qualification. One was an Asian female, one was a white female, three white males. The minority was not good at the time for, uh, for her new, for the change in her employment. Protective Service Dispatcher, one, one new hire Hispanic female. Police Cadet was one hire, a black female. Police Sergeant, two promotion, one Hispanic male, one white male. Police Officer, three hires, two white males, one female. Administration Support, After-School Activities Specialist, seven hires. One Hispanic female, two black females, three black males, one white male. After-school Assistant Program Director, one hire, a black female. Uh, Library Page, two hires, two black females. Assistant Law Enforcement Accreditation Manager, one promotion, white female. And when we get to the Scale Craft, there was no hire during that time period. Serviceman, Ten, Backup Mini-Most Driver, one hire, one black, uh, male. In this area, we still have a lot of work to do to make sure that we, our workforce reflect the community we live in. So we will continue working with the HR Department to make sure that going forward, we implement where we're hiring from our town. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Finance?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, last, uh, last council meeting, we had two months' worth of reports. Since that time, we have not had another meeting. So I will just announce that the next meeting of the Finance Subcommittee is a special meeting again due to the President's Day holiday next Monday. So we will be meeting next, a week from Thursday, February 22nd, upstairs in Conference Room 5. Uh, there are three basic items on the agenda. One, we will have a presentation on the town's pension and post-employment benefits, uh, packages and costs by our pension consultants. Two, we will have a discussion of the upcoming town budget and especially, um, some discussion of payment in lieu of taxes, type of programs for nonprofits, monies we get from the state for that, et cetera. And finally, we will have a short discussion and potential, of the potential and research on land value taxation. So if you're interested in knowing what that is, come to the meeting and we'll start discussing it. It will be a lengthy conversation. Uh, for some of you may be familiar with, is Hartford, uh, Hartford was looking at doing this in some areas of the town a few years ago. I don't think they ever did, but it's a different way of looking at valuation. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety?
Madam Mayor, I'll be very brief. Uh, the Committee on Public Safety had a special meeting tonight where we heard from a consultant regarding the communications system here in town. Uh, we are beginning the process of having discussions of integrating, uh, departments and public safety units that uses the public safety communication systems. Uh, that will be police, fire, volunteer EMS, um, and the fire departments. Uh, we heard from each of the chiefs and the consultant, um, who made three recommendations to us. Uh, and, uh, one of the recommendations that the chief writes are, um, recommendation number two, uh, which should cost about $2.1 million. And we will be discussing that as a capital, um, improved, capital improvement when we're in the budget process. Um, each of the chief gave, uh, updated report on their individual departments. Um, one particular thing that is concerning to the Public Safety Committee, um, the Chief of Police have indicated to us on this meet, this, this meeting and our last meeting, that there's an uptick in automobile theft. And that's because people, residents are leaving their cars running, um, while, uh, to warm up. Uh, please, 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 lock your doors or warm your car up in the garage with the garage door. Kind of open a little bit because we don't want carbon dioxide to get in your home or buy those little club, um, things for the stairwell. Um, please, please, please. Um, and that is in the all neighborhoods. So please, please, uh, um, be vigilant and mindful of running cars. Um, second, third, we, um, the police chief discussed that there would be an EMS, um, certification class on April 10th. Um, for anybody interested in doing that, you could contact the police department. Um, also, Chief Farmer in the Blue Hills Fire Department is desperately seeking volunteers. If you would like to volunteer, please reach out to the Blue Hills Fire District. Um, they are in desperate need of volunteer firefighters. Uh, and last but not least, we have two promotions coming up, um, in the police department. Uh, and I would like to congratulate the two officers, um, who will be promoted next week. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes my report for the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Committee on Committees?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Committee on Committees hasn't met since our last council meeting. We had our regular meeting in, in January. We are moving to fill vacancies on our town boards and committees. Uh, and a number of those vacancies have been, uh, names have been coming in from the community. We are soliciting people from the community who are interested and want to participate on some of these boards. To, uh, to do so, there's a, um, sign-up sheet available on our website, town website. If you go to the Town Clerk's Office, Town Clerk's, uh, page, I guess it would be. Uh, you can find out what committees are, uh, are looking for, for people to participate. Uh, there will not be a meeting, we're scheduled for a meeting on the 16th, I believe. This month, we're canceling to, we're going to try and expedite, uh, the meaning of people to committees after we have the Democratic Town Committee meets uh, in February, so that we can speed up that process by our next town council meeting. So that's basically all I have. Again, encouraging people to volunteer, come forward. There are some interesting projects going on in town on some of these committees, and you might find it very exciting to participate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Land Use and Economic Development?
Oh, that's me too.
Yes?
There's nothing to report on that also. We had, we had a meeting in January. Our next meeting is coming up on the 20th of this month. We'll report back then.
Thank you. Old Business, um, 1617-44, consider and take action regarding the addition to the blighted property list.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The, uh, town staff is recommending that two properties be added to the existing blighted property list. Uh, those addresses are 11 Guernsey Road and 7 Victor Street. So I would ask that a motion and second be made to add those to the list. Mike Casilla, our zoning enforcement officer, is present to answer any specific questions concerning those properties.
Councilman Ann?
Yes, uh, I think we should get a motion first and then ask questions. As, uh, I would, I would move the adoption of the request for, for discussion purposes?
A second.
Uh, I wanted to say that I did go out and look at these properties this afternoon, and clearly they're suitable for inclusion on a blighted list. One of them, however, had a very large hole in the roof. And I'm not sure what the difference between a blighted property is and one that's unfit for human occupancy. Is there a difference?
That house is vacant.
Which one is that?
The one on Victor.
The one on Victor is vacant. Um, that house actually had been, um, when Tom Hooper was here, identified as a, as a blighted property as well. If you saw, they scraped the paint. There's still some jacks on the side of the property that have remained there since Tom left, and it's probably three years now. Um, the hole in the roof is fairly new, um, but the owner's just not moving. The actual house on Guernsey, that was actually on the list in 2012 as well. It's obviously not as bad as the one on Victor, but I'm still getting neighborhood complaints regarding the one on Guernsey. But that was on the list in 2012. So you asked me why it's, it's, it's...
Why is it unfit for human occupancy? Which I think is a different designation.
Neither are occupied. The house on Guernsey has been vacant probably since 2012. And the one on Victor, I'm not sure how long that's been vacant, but it is vacant.
Uh, Councilman Goff?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, I, uh, attached to this was a memo from Town Planner Jose Guider just talking about the blighted property list. Currently, it's broken into essentially two types. Those are inoperable motor vehicles, the type of thing we see around town where there are cars all over the place. Um, and then properties with, uh, properties, property, well, what you call property maintenance issues, which is where these two fall. I guess my question is a more general one in terms of what's the sequin? Some, a property goes onto this list, then how do we resolve these problems? Because what I've just heard is that both the, the two properties here, there have been ongoing problems for some time. And I think, you know, what, one of the big, big issues with blighted properties or the kind of thing we see in the communities that people are upset about is that, as we heard eloquently about the trash and so forth, is how do, how do we get from the identification stage to the action stage and doing something about it?
If you, um, finished reading that, that memo, we are putting plans in place to make ticketing citations a little bit easier, a little bit quicker. And we're hoping for the unregistered motor vehicles. Instead of me going out with a police officer, then I'll be able to just issue them on a daily basis. So instead of every two months getting together with the police and issuing them, I'll be able to issue them on a daily basis, and those are $25 apiece. The properties with the motor vehicles on them, they are properties that have been ticketed numerous times, numerous times. And they continue to keep the cars on there. When those properties go on the blighted property list, the blight fines are $100 per day instead of $25 per day. So again, under the blighted property, if there's unregistered inoperable motor vehicles, they can be called blight. We are still in the process of working out the details for me to be able to issue the citations. Previously, when, when Police Chief Hard was here, uh, it basically came down to me not being able to, that I would have to go out with a police officer. A call would have to be made to dispatch. Dispatch would have to give a case number for each and every ticket that was being issued. So again, with the police, with their radios, so on and so forth, they were able to call dispatch and get a, and get a number. Uh, we hope to bypass that at this point, but still keep the police in the loop so they know what tickets have been issued. Um, we have to work on where those tickets will be paid and the type of, um, uh, the type of, um, appeal that a person can have. Could, but in both cases, um, the motor vehicle tickets and the blight can all be appealed. So we're setting up an, uh, an appeal hearing process for that.
And just, just one follow-up. So it's, it sounds like in terms of the process you currently have in place, and I knew that we, you know, we had moved forward with allowing you to actually do ticketing as opposed to going through the police. Uh, but that's improving the efficiency of the current sort of enforcement process we have. Has the enforcement process, even though, even though it may be not efficient in terms of doing the ticketing and so forth, hasn't been effectively getting these properties off the blighted property list, though? I mean, because...
Yeah, we've, we've had more than 60 properties on the list.
Okay.
I mean, they're actually structures that have come down in town. Um, and I could provide you with those. So we've actually had structures demolished in town. So, yeah, again, what typically happened was when we first adopted the blight ordinance, Tom Hooper, the previous planner, myself, we went out and identified 20 or so properties. After those properties were cleaned up, we went back out and did the next tier, if you would. And those properties, I think, all but one or two have been completely cleared up. Um, the, the next tier are ones that, that may not meet the threshold for blight. Um, if you, if you looked at the Guernsey, you know, you could probably drive by and wonder why it's on the list. But it's on the list because we've been dealing with neighbor complaints since, since 2012. Uh, in 2012, the owner did do work, replaced gutters, cleaned the debris off the roof, things like that. But because no one's living in the house, it, it just continued to, to still decay, which is why it's, it's back on there. But again, there were some, again, probably 60-some-odd properties that we've already, we've already been through. Uh, one comes to mind, it's 2 Maple Avenue. Um, that, that structure came down because of the housing court orders.
Councilor Mia?
Uh, yes. Um, I'm pleased that we're making some progress with citations and dealing with the paperwork aspect of it. But in the process of looking for these properties that you've mentioned that you want to put on the list, I came across a number that probably also should be on the list. And I think I've referred them to you in the short time that I was out there looking. But I encourage everybody else out there who feels they have a problem, let's, let's move it up the list and bring it to Mr. Casilla's attention and have a, see if we can, see if it is truly blighted, meets his definition, and we can do something about it. I think it's extremely important that we deal with these issues before they get worse. When we were campaigning for the election last year, we were walking through every neighborhood. And it's throughout the town. We found vacant buildings, we found blighted, appearing blighted conditions. And it was very unsettling. So if that's the way it is now, it could get worse, and I want to prevent that. And I'm glad that you're doing your work, and I think we have to up our, up our game so as to, to improve our town. So thank you very much.
Again, we've had discussions, discussions between blight and what's not blight. And again, I, I keep going back to the definition of 99% of the blight ordinances that I've read is that they're asked to be, again, of public health and/or public safety. Um, like I said, we can all tell which houses are truly blighted. We can tell which properties are, are spick and span. It's the ones in the middle that, that, that are questionable. Happy to go out and look at any property that your neighbor or a citizen asks me to. We may not come to an agreement on whether it does cross that threshold. But like I said, be happy to go out and take a look at any property.
So in the case of a, a property that's abandoned and it's still owned by the bank, what kind of process do we have in place to, to work with the bank to make sure that? I mean, you can't just go out and just ticket it. What do you do in that case?
Again, generally speaking, the banks do keep up with the properties once they acquire it through the courts. They'll send somebody out once the, once the property has been vacated, once the eviction notice has been, has been given. They'll go out, they'll change the locks, they'll drain the pipes. Um, and they generally cut the grass once every two weeks on the property. Much more than that, they, they, they generally don't do.
I've came across properties that, you know, it's abandoned, and the grass are tall and no one is doing anything. But, uh, I'm happy to know that there is something in place, but...
Yeah, I mean, our grass, it's, it's 12 inches, it's a foot. And again, generally speaking, um, by the time spring ends and summer starts, we generally know which properties we have out there, and we do contact the bank. Uh, typically, the banks get, I think it's per the ordinance, 15 days to cut it. Typically, the banks get, I think it's per the ordinance, 15 days to cut it. So by the time it reaches 12 inches, you know, it could be, it could be another four inches by the time we go out and actually hire somebody to cut it on the vacant properties. But as I showed a councilperson man today, there are a lot of foreclosures out there. There are probably well over 100 foreclosures, and that's presently in the courts being foreclosed upon.
Councilor McCray?
Quick question. How do we define blight as a town?
It's in the ordinances. And again, typically, it's, uh, it's a property that has to have a health or immediate health or safety concern. And unfortunately, we don't regulate ugly. We've got a lot of ugly, we've got a lot of ugly out there. But again, typically speaking, it needs to have a health and/or a safety aspect.
Councilor Mayor?
Yes, Mike, one last question, maybe to ask for Ms. Daniel, because she raised the early issue about trash buildup in lots, properties. Does that constitute blight in your...
Um, we do have litter ordinances as well, and that's one of the ones that I can enforce, but typically, I cannot go into backyards. So unless someone picks up the phone and tells me, I have enough problems with trash on the street at the curb. So again, if it's in the backyard and I can't see it from the street, typically, I need a neighbor's permission to go on their property and view it.
Good.
Happy to view any, any complaint that comes in, but again, litter is one of the ones that I'll be able to write a ticket for, and that should speed things along.
And unregistered motor vehicles or partially taken apart motor vehicles?
I identify about 400 a year. You can drive through any neighborhood and you can, you can, you can pick them out, but again, I, I, I do a steady, a steady job, again, with about 400 a year that I, that I personally identify.
Yes, I'd just like to add, what Mike Casolo's saying is, is that we have our Public Works Department go out probably half a dozen times or more per growing season and mow properties where we can't get the owner or the bank to mow them, and we then put a lien on the property. So there is also our own town staff that's involved in some of these activities.
Any other...
Move the question?
Yes.
Yes.
So can I have a motion to add to the, uh...
We did, yeah.
So are all in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries.
And again, to anybody here, anybody listening, happy to go out. You can, you can email me through the Planning Department on the webpage, you can give me a call, it's the Planning Department. Happy to go out and take a look at any, at any property, any concerns that you, that you have.
We just voted.
I know that you have a question. I have a question.
So is it a reactive thing or is there a proactive measure where you're going out to assess and driving around town to look at properties? Or do you wait for...
I do get, I do get complaints typically if I'm out looking at a complaint or if I'm looking at previous properties that I've identified, if you'd, if you'd like to stop by one day. Typically, I'll go out a list with like 30 properties that I'm inspecting that either had trash or unregistered cars or, or something on it. Generally, I'll come back with the other side of the sheet for, with other properties that I, that I saw, the concerns that I saw while I was out there. So, yeah, I, if I'm out there and I see something, I'm writing it down.
Thank you, Michael. 1718-24, consider and take action regarding an ordinance on public swimming pools. We just had the public hearing, so, um...
Move adoption?
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. 1718-25, consider and take action regarding an ordinance on food and food handlers. We just had the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 1718-35, new business. Consider and take action regarding adoption of resolution 2016 and 2017 State Homeland Security Grant Program.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members, the town has to file with the State Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security appropriate forms if we want to apply for any of these grants that are offered through the state. Generally, it's federal money. There's been a change in personnel at the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, so they want us to reauthorize the appropriate forms and resolution, the resolution which is attached to the agenda this evening.
Question?
Question?
Councilor Mayor?
Yes, is there a time limit on when this has to be filed through to the manager, please, Madam Mayor?
There is, if you want, if we want to apply for grants for this coming year. I would indicate to you, though, that the amount of grant money available is minimal. The town has not applied in the last several years because the amount of the grant is between $6,000 and $8,000, and the amount of paperwork, monitoring, auditing, and everything exceeds the, the amount of the grants. However, we never know what may happen at the federal level in terms of additional money that might be coming down, and therefore, we'd like to be prepared to apply for it when and if it, if it occurs. So I would request that the appropriate motions which are included, I can read them if you wish, that you do. If there's a specific question, I'd be happy to try to answer.
The questions that came up in reading through the package that you sent out implied costs inherent to the community, to Bloomfield for maintenance and upkeep and all other things which you have absolutely no understanding for, that are, could have budget consequences that we need to be aware of. And I was wondering if you had some good share of that. Evidently, $8,000 probably won't go very far. My preference would be to send this to committee for further discussion.
Well, you can, you can do that. I have no problems with referring it. I guess the issue is the maintenance and all of these things is a common provision in almost all grants for equipment or those types of things. A lot of the equipment, a lot of the grant money in the past has been limited to primarily electronic equipment and some of that sort of thing, and so the maintenance deals with that. It also deals with certain vehicles or, or equipment that goes with the vehicles and so forth, depending upon what, what is eligible under the grant statutes and so forth. But I have no problem if you want to refer it. We don't apply, as I said, so it doesn't really, it has not affected us in the last several years because we haven't applied for anything. But should money come down, there would be a requirement, if we wanted to apply for it, that we have to maintain things, so...
Isn't it all for specific things?
We don't know. I don't know if there are other questions.
Are there, any other questions?
I'd like to refer this to Public Safety, if you can, Public Safety Committee.
I think that, Madam Mayor, I think that's a good recommendation to put it on the calendar for the Public Safety Committee for further discussion.
I would, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So this matter has been referred. Any, I'm sorry, any abstentions? We have one abstention.
Yep.
So this will be referred to the Public Safety, and hopefully be on the calendar for the next meeting?
Yes.
1718-36, consider and take action regarding tax refunds.
Madam Mayor, this is an item and council members that appears periodically as adjustments need to be made to individual accounts for refunds. I think the tax collectors and the finance director's background memo explain essentially the, the list. You will see more of these in the future as, on an annual basis as we go through corrections.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, I'm going to ask the town manager for his report.
Right, I really don't have too much of a report. I was on vacation the past 10 days, so maybe that was a relief to some people, but I don't really have a report. I think things are going along well with the town. We did have some, as you know, some weather events and whatnot. There was no specific issues beyond the ordinary ones that we had with those types of, of events, so... And just, just, I guess, another note based upon the performance of Mr. Driscoll tonight, I think that that was a very impressive, well orchestrated, somewhat of a pun there, but, uh, performance this evening, and I think that was a very outstanding example of what's possible on the music program at Bloomfield High School, so...
Excellent. I do want to put a plug in there just because he said that they're having a production of Annie. I think it's in April, but if we could all go out there and report them, I think that would be amazing. Before I give my report, I want to ask the town manager about a bond commission amount of money that the town supposedly had. I think it was like $5 million or something like that. Can you give me some insight on that?
To my knowledge, the town never either received or was successful in getting any funding from the, the state bond commission at all. As many of you or some of you may know, we did make an attempt under the auspices of then Representative David Barham to see if we could tap into that for the Human Services Facility. A meeting was held with the Office of Policy and Management Staff, which provides staff to the State Bonding Commission back in May of, of last year. I think I previously indicated it was in September or October, but it was actually in May. And we had some guarded optimism coming out of that meeting that maybe we would be successful in getting something to, to assist in the cost of the project. But the state, as many of you know, developed significant budget issues throughout the summer and into the fall. We didn't have a state budget until the beginning of October, and it, the request did not appear on the November/December bond commission agenda, and it is not currently on the February bond commission agenda on the 16th later this week. But to my knowledge, we've never received any money on that project from, from any state grant or the bond commission, so...
Excellent, thank you. So Michelle had alluded to our supposed town hall meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, and it was absolutely wonderful. We had over 125 individuals in the high school library that came out and they just wanted to talk about their town. They had issues that they wanted to talk about. They had, it was interesting to see that some of the issues that we're having on the east side of town, they're also having on the west side of town. Those meetings, we're going to have more of them because we do want to hear from our, our neighbors. They brought up some issues about developing local contractors' guide for community residence. They talked about reviewing the town minority hiring process, which Deputy Curtin talked about today. Developing and ongoing traffic enforcement demonstration in key areas, and we're going to be talking to the police chief in regards to that. Talked about working with Board of Education and local employees, develop internship program for the high school students. We're going to talk with Don Harris and Mr. Thompson about that. Resolve intersection problems at Bloomfield, Tonxus, Wintonbury, and Park Avenue in the absence of roundabouts, looking to latest computer applications for traffic control. We made sure to take very good notes, India took very, very good notes of the issues that were brought up, and we, as a council, we're looking into these issues, and by the time we have our next town hall meeting, we'll be able to report back on the findings that we uncovered, on some solutions that we have uncovered, but please know that we were grateful for you coming out, for you taking the time. It was supposed to be a 60-minute meeting, it turned into a 90-minute meeting, and everybody was happy with it. They just wanted to talk, and we just wanted to listen. So we thank you for coming out. We also want to also give special thanks to former Mayor Sid Schulman, former councilman Leon Rivers, and Joe Washington for their constructive suggestions. We thank them for that. We realize that we can't do it all, we can't do it all by ourselves, but we thank them that they still want to be involved and they still want to help us to progress forward. So we thank them for that. Again, to the high school for the wonderful display for the...
Black history.
Black history awareness. We will also have another black history awareness at our next town council meeting. I thank State Rep. Bobby Gibson for being with us on tonight. It's always good to have support, and I think that's...
Not a problem for today.
Oh, so today. Today, we were able to go to MeteComet and visit with the students as they did some of their black history acknowledgements and awareness, and it was so exciting. They were just so happy that we were there, but they were learning so much information, and they just wanted to share what they were learning. So once again, I thank you, Mr. Harris and Mr. Thompson and all the people at MeteComet for allowing us to come in and observe their black history presentation.
We learned a lot today.
We learned, I'm sorry, we did learn a lot today.
You did.
It was, it was wonderful. It was absolutely wonderful. If you ever have an opportunity just to go in and sit in a class with these young students, they will blow your mind. So I know we have a long way to go, but we are making strides. We are making strides. Did I forget anything? Because I did ask the council to keep me on track. I didn't forget anything? Excellent. Okay, so now we're going to go to approval of our minutes. January 22nd, 2018 minutes.
I'll move adoption of those minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. Our town hall meeting on January 25th?
Move adoption?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstention.
Any abstentions? Okay, those meetings, minutes are approved. So at this point, we're going to...
Council comments?
I'm sorry. Let's start with, Councilman McCray, council comments?
No comments at this moment, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Goff?
Hi, I'd just like to say two things. One of the things that I, besides the high school students coming in tonight, I want to emphasize, I think everyone who was at the town hall meeting back in January 25th was very, was very pleased with the environment of the town hall meeting. I know myself that I do not have many opportunities to get, to go to the high school. I would like to change that, I would like to go more often, and it's wonderful to get our citizens in and see our school, the school facilities, and it was a great environment. So that's one of the things we hope to really emphasize with the town hall meetings is moving around the town and seeing, seeing facilities, seeing the facilities in Bloomfield and being with them. I also did want to make a note just for the record, for anyone who has been watching the Hartford Current. Last Tuesday's Current gave the top 10 taxpayers, and the story was incorrect, as people probably noticed. A retraction was printed in Friday, but the Friday retraction was at the bottom of page B2 in setting the record straight, so there was not a lot of, a lot of information. So the February 6th article had a headline that entitled Niagara, A Significant Player in Grand List Increase, and that is not the case. It, it did increase the grand list because of personal property, but there was an error made in the way the numbers were run and what was included in the overall size of the number, which was 35 million, was machinery that under state tax law can't be taxed. So the number was considerably less than that. When you looked at the list on Friday, the Friday list was indeed correct, and the, the numbers that weren't included, the Cigna piece, the ninth taxpayer, I believe, was 21.6 million, and Pepperidge Farms, the 10th taxpayer, was 15.1 million. one million in terms of valuation. So, those are the numbers, and, but it's still a good year for taxes in Bloomfield, and we're very happy about that. Thank you.
Counselor DiLorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll just grab that for a second. Okay, I too want to say that it's not the first time that I have heard the Bloomfield High School Choir, and I hope it's not going to be the last time, they are very talented and very good. And I know, excuse me, usually around April or May timeframe, I think it is, Mr. Harris, there's a, usually a concert of some sort, I've gone to the Bushnell for it, I think it's been in other places as well, but that is a great opportunity to not only see the high school, but to see all of our kids from all grades perform, and it's, it's very good, so I would encourage you to do that when it comes out. The other thing I wanted to mention is I've read a lot about the flu, and I would encourage our residents who have not had a flu shot to try to see if you can still get a flu shot if, if you still feel that way. Or, yeah, you can't, April twenty-sixth, thank you, Mr. Harris. So April twenty-sixth will be that concert, but please attend if you can. And again, if, if you can get a flu shot, I think it's just very tragic to hear about how many deaths within our own state and across the nation, and especially that of children. You know, it seems to be affecting the young and the old, and we do have a high elderly population, and I do feel that flu shots, I myself, I can't get one because I'm allergic to something that's in the vaccine that they give you, so I just need to use a lot of hand sanitizer, like I was pointing out, and stay away from, from sick people, but, you know, it's really, you know, a rough year for the flu, so anyway, please get a flu shot, and please also remember your neighbors and give to the Bloomfield Food Bank or to the Fuel Bank. Thank you.
Counselor Man?
Well, I'd just like to reiterate to my fellow citizens to take an interest in your town, come out and volunteer, participate in one of the committees that exist in town, go to the website again, or to talk to our town clerk. I do know there's going to be a town cleanup coming up in, in April, and I'll, more information at another time. We're all in this together, and we have to work as a community, we're, our, our major goal as a council is to improve our community relations with each other, with our town, and make the town work as we all expect it to, so thank you very much.
I also attended Mete Comic today, and there was a nice display of the students to, to show us their knowledge and understand black history and everyone that came before us and contribute towards society. In addition to that, this, this past weekend, I went to the Leisure Center to play basketball with my son, but ended up picking up a new sport. It's called pickleball. You know, I encourage you to get out and play, they play every Saturday morning, eleven-thirty, it's fun, you get a chance to kind of get out there with the seniors, you know, they love the game, it's a fun game, if you play tennis, it's an easy pickup, so, you know, thanks to Phil for bringing pickleball to Bloomfield, so I'm sorry to add that. Thank you.
Counselor Waterhouse?
Well, I just want to say that there's going to be a spring shred day coming up shortly, so feel free to partake. It is our differences that make us a stronger community, so please come out, give us your opinions, what's going on in your neighborhood, any ideas, please keep them coming. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we end, I just want to read this poem, I, sorry. Our deepest fear is, not that we are inadequate, our deepest fear is that we are powerful beyond measure. It is our light, not our darkness, that most frightens us. Your playing small does not serve the world. There is nothing enlightened about shrinking so that other people won't feel insecure around you. We are all meant to shine, as children do. It's not just in some of us, it is in everyone, and as we let our own lights shine, we unconsciously give other people permission to do the same. As we are liberated from our own fear, our presence automatically liberates others. Isn't that good? That's by Marian Williamson. So thank you very much. We're going to move to executive session, do I need a motion?
Madam Mayor, before we go, I just want to acknowledge a gentleman in the, the audience who just moved to Bloomfield. He's been here how long, sir?
Two months.
And he's out here at his office, what's your name, sir? I'm sorry. Jody, last name?
Linderman.
Linderman, okay, thanks for coming out. Thank you.
Are you, are you guys students?
Yeah, we're students at...
You're students at, was this an assignment to come here?
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that you guys learned something, right? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yep.
For these purposes, you need to come to town.
So, we're going to, we're going to...
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So we're going to go into executive session, where we're going to be discussing concerns pending claims and litigation, discussion concerning possible land acquisition, so we will need the town attorney and the town manager.
So, if you want to go into executive session.
That's what they just did.
I had no idea.
I was a little...